The US government and the Texas flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, allegiance to the city, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. With us tonight, we have Kirk Flexo. He's from the Steenville Ministerial Alliance, the president or chair, whatever your honor. Y'all do a great job. I was giving you a hard time. You'll lead us to our invocation.
Yes, yes. Tonight, I'd like to pray the Psalm 25, 1 through 10, if y'all would bow your heads with me. Oh Lord, we come before you in prayer. Our God, we trust in you. Please do not let us be humiliated. Do not let our enemies triumphantly rejoice over us. Certainly none who rely upon you will be humiliated. Those who deal in treachery will be thwarted and humiliated. Make us understand your ways, oh Lord. Teach us your paths. Guide us into your truth and teach us, for you are the God who delivers us. On you we rely all day long. Remember your compassionate and faithful deeds, oh Lord, for you have always acted in this manner. Do not hold against us the sins of our youth or our rebellious acts, because you are faithful to us. Extend to us your favor, oh Lord. The Lord is both kind and fair. That is why he teaches sinners the right way to live. May he show the humble what is right. May he teach the humble his ways. The Lord always proves faithful and reliable to those who follow the demands of his covenant. And we thank you, Lord, for being a good God and for taking care of us. Let us be the people that you hope and dream we will be, and you give us the power to be. It's in your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank Kirk. I want to introduce somebody tonight. We have with us over against the wall over here, a colleague of mine, Jensen Monk and Ella Shaw. They are members of our, of the Steenville Youth Council, and they've been meeting up here, learning about what it's like to be in government and to operate government in Steenville, Texas. We thank y'all and welcome to the meeting tonight. Next, we have with us Claudia Iceman. Is she there? There you go. Come on up. She is the president of the local hospital, and just like we had just right here, and we're going to let her speak to us a little bit about what's going on with.
Got a place of prominence.
There you go. Right there in the middle.
I'm disturbed.
I've asked her to come tell us a little bit about what's going on with the hospital here in Tampa.
Thank you.
With some of the great changes that have happened.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, and thank you all, council, for having me this evening. I'm not going to take up too much of anybody's time, because the last thing anybody wants is a long meeting, and I have to go to an event when I leave here and do some more stuff, so it'll be a long evening for me. But one of the things I wanted to do when I, when I talked to Mayor Savin is get the opportunity to come down and speak with the council about what's going on at the hospital. You know, sometimes when hospitals are not government-owned or community-owned, they don't get the same access, or the government officials don't have the same access at the hospital to see what's, what's been happening. So I thought it would be helpful, especially as we're winding down the year, to talk a little bit about what's been happening at Texas Health Steenville. So first of all, I want to say a little bit about the services and the things that we have expanded at the hospital over the last, particularly over the last 12 months, but really over the last 24 months, we've been working on a number of things. First of all, we've only had MRI at the hospital three days a week, and that's been for years. We've expanded that now. We've got full-time MRI services at the hospital, so this is new, and that's effective as of this month. Now, we only have MRI, the truck is only staffed, and it's there permanently, the trailer is there permanently on our campus, but it's only staffed five days a week. But still, we've gone from three days of coverage to five days of coverage. We hope to expand that to seven as soon as we get appropriate staffing for it. The other thing is, we now have nuclear stress testing capabilities. That has been an extremely valuable program, so now anyone that needs a nuclear stress test does not have to leave the area for that. They can get it with us, and Dr. Williams is doing an awful lot of those tests, and she reads them. But we also have referrals from other people, too, for nuclear stress testing. We started a pulmonary rehabilitation program. From the day we opened it up, we already had more business than we knew what to do with. So again, it's another good feature. People no longer have to leave for some of those services, so we're proud of that. And of course, our surgery renovation, that's a $13 million project. We probably have four to six months left on it, and then that will be completed. And then we continue to do other things to enhance equipment. We've got new equipment we brought into the OB area. We're going to be getting a surgical robot next year to enhance our surgical service lines, et cetera. So we have a lot, a lot of things going on by way of investment and, and growth at the hospital. The other thing, there have been tremendous improvements in quality, patient satisfaction, physician engagement, physician satisfaction. And the reason I, I mention that is because when you go on a journey of improving quality and reaching out to the community and really elevating what you're doing clinically, from a clinical services standpoint, everybody starts taking notice. So, you know, Newsweek magazine recognized our hospital as one of the top 50 hospitals in the state of Texas. We're ranked number 35. There's a whole lot of hospitals that didn't make it to that list. There's 900 licensed hospitals in the state of Texas, and 500 of them are like ours, general acute care hospitals. So it is, it is certainly a point of pride for my staff, because they're the ones doing this work. I'm not doing it, they are. It's a real point of pride for them, and I want to make sure they get recognized for the type of work that they're doing in your community, because they're your residents and citizens, people you go to church with, and you have no idea how good they are. They're amazing, and this just validates that. So the other thing is, is that people have been noticing that they get great care at the hospital, so guess what? We're a whole lot busier. So if you take a look at our numbers year-to-date, the people we're serving year-to-date, 2024 versus 2023, we've had nine and a half percent more admissions, we've had eight percent more outpatient, outpatients come to the hospital, five, five and a half percent more in the emergency department, three, three percent more surgeries, and 21 percent more babies are being born at the hospital. So that is really, really good news, because we just recruited another obstetrician who's got a lot of family ties to the community, and we want to make sure that she stays busy, and she's been doing a great job so far. The other thing is, I want to, want to mention is how important this hospital is from an economic standpoint to the community, so I'm glad my economic development friend is sitting right over there on the front row. But we, we have, you know, year-to-date so far, we've got 32 million in payroll, and again, these are, this is money that stays here. This isn't money that goes somewhere else that stays in this community. And then we have provided in bad debt and financial assistance, and this is important, I want everybody to pay attention to this. We have provided year-to-date, as of October, 15.4 million dollars in bad debt and charity assistance for people that can't pay for healthcare. So, you know, one of the things that I frequently hear when I talk to people in the community is, well, you know, gee whiz, the hospital's not community-owned, and this kind of thing, and, you know, money kind of leaves the community. This money that we're talking about here, this stays in the community, because this is direct benefit to people that cannot afford healthcare and otherwise couldn't access it if this hospital didn't exist here. So there's a tremendous benefit to having the hospital here, and we're, I'm, I'm always excited to talk about the great work of the staff at the hospital. Again, these are your neighbors, these are people you go to church with, these are people sometimes you went to school with, you graduated from high school with, they're still here, they're working every day, and they're, they're second to none, some of the best staff I've ever worked with anywhere in the country, and the best medical staff. We have a very engaged medical staff, they do great work. Anytime I go and talk to patients, whether I see them in the emergency department, I saw another person that I know well up on the patient floor today, because that individual just had a knee replacement surgery. They can't rave enough about the type of care that they get. So it's not good enough to just be an organization where you have high positive clinical outcomes, and you're compared favorably with all the other hospitals within your state. You also have to have a high-touch environment, and you have to take really great care of people, and our staff does that. So a lot of good things happening. The hospital is, is profitable, it's doing very, very well this year, and, and I see good things continuing, you know, down the road. And as I say, every time I get to talk about the hospital, you know, it doesn't matter who owns the hospital, you know, what matters is who uses it. It matters who it exists for. And we all take healthcare for granted until our healthcare is suffering. Our, our health needs somebody to help take care of it, you know? And so this hospital is, is just such a great asset for the community because of the people they're serving. So I'm glad to brag on them, glad to talk about the great work of those folks, and, and grateful that there's such a good hospital with so many good people here in Steenville.
I want to mention also, y'all, in cooperation with Charlton A&amp;M Medical School, who else? Jason? Stevens Medical Surgical Clinic is doing a residency program where people come to town.
We are.
They're involved, and they get the, the whole purpose is to get people to want to be rural health doctors.
Right. So we've had, we've had our first A&amp;M student that came through last year. We're, we're planning the agenda for the second one that is about to come through, actually in January, and, you know, the, the importance of that program is that we're, we're the hub of it, we're the affiliate partner of Texas A&amp;M, but we reach out to all of the other healthcare institutions in town to get them to participate. So we have those students go through surgery, we have them go into the clinics and have experience in the clinics, we get them into the emergency department, they see the trauma patients that come in, because, you know, we're the only trauma center for many, many miles from here. So, you know, we, we get the things that are pretty serious and pretty bad, and, and, you know, people that are coming into rural healthcare need to see that and know that, because that is, is frequently the type of thing that they experience. They see a much broader range of services in a hospital like ours, because we're the only one. So they're, they're getting really good experiences, and, and we've heard a lot of favorable feedback out of the program, and we're just going to continue to keep it going.
Well, I took her to dinner one night while she was here, and lovely little lady is really considering rural healthcare, which is, you know, not long ago, we had a problem where we had to shut down the OB.
Right.
And no, but no babies were delivered here.
Right.
For months. And I'll tell you what, I've, I've had complaints from citizens about lots of things, but other than COVID, you know, that was the one thing I had the most complaints about, and it's important that people understand what it's like to be in a rural community, because people are afraid to come here sometimes.
They are. They are. And because the perception is it's less than, and it isn't. And, you know, we need to make sure, that's why having recognition from Newsweek and other places is really important. It's not because we need it, because we see our data all the time, so, so we know what the quality is that comes out of the hospital. But everybody else needs to see it, because it really sends a message to people about, hey, you know, if I need something, I don't have to go to the metroplex always to get it. Some things you are going to need to go there, but there are certain specialty services you need to go to a place where they're done in high enough volume that you know the expertise is there. But for other things, most of us can get those done in our local hospital.
One of the things that I found interesting, as I was researching the OB situation, many of the OBs, I think 60-something percent of the graduate OBs are now females.
They are.
And they're all getting through their residency and getting their licenses to perform obstetrics about the time they're having babies.
Exactly. And that, that changes, that changes the dynamic.
If you want to be on call, I have to be on call. If I'm here with two other OBs, I'm here on call.
It's who's going to be on call, and how many of them you have to have to cover the population, because, you know, oddly enough, people now in that age group, they want a life. They just don't want to work all the time. So I can't understand it personally, but, you know, it's, it is how it is.
Well, nobody's a doctor yet.
Right.
Well, thank you for coming.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for having me.
Anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Be glad to answer them.
We appreciate what you do for the city of Steenville. I thank you very much for coming.
Absolutely.
And she's.
All right. Thank you.
She is willing to talk to you. If you have any questions, I call her.
Right.
Whenever I want to, and she always responds.
Anybody can call me, and I'll be happy to respond.
Appreciate you very much. Thank you, man.
All right. Thanks very much, you all.
And next is the presentation of Downtown Sculpture Project. Who is that? Oh, I should have known.
Mayor Savin and council. It's a privilege to be here to talk to you a little bit about the Boot Statue Project. Steenville Main Street is part of its tourism component, has been working with a company called Unity since 23, August 23, to create a statue for downtown Steenville. And the boot design has been selected, and the finished product is scheduled to arrive soon. And so tonight, this is just information only to introduce you to the owner of that company, which is Unity, which is Rachel Briston. So Rachel, if you'll come forward, and she's going to talk to you just a little bit more about the Boots Spur Project, in case other businesses or individual residents are interested.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Rachel, and I am the owner of Unity and the founder of the Boots with the Spur Project, and the Butterflies of Granberry Project as well in Granberry. My heart is to promote Unity in the community, and these community projects are based off of Psalms 133 verse 1, which is, "How good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity." My heart is to give back to those in need through creative and meaningful projects like this one. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak today, and I'd especially like to thank Mr. King for considering this project for the community. It has been an honor to design the Boots with the Spur statue to celebrate and honor the cowboy capital of the world, Steenville, Texas. The Boots with the Spur Project celebrates Steenville's rich western heritage while bringing people together and attracting visitors. The idea is to place concrete boot statues around town. Each boot will be painted by local artists to showcase Steenville's cowboy history and culture, culture and unique spirit. These boots will serve as eye-catching landmarks and fun photo opportunities for both residents and visitors. This project will benefit the community in three key ways. It will attract more people to local businesses and restaurants, boosting Steenville's already thriving economy. A percentage of the proceeds from each boot sale will be donated on behalf of my business, Unity, to the foster's home for children to support their needs that they may have. It will also provide jobs for local artists, giving them a platform to showcase their talents and grow their careers while also getting some money, so it's fun. Projects like this have been very successful in other cities, bringing communities together and increasing tourism. I have an ongoing project in Granberry called Butterflies of Granberry, which has brought so much joy to the community through butterfly statues, and it has been humbling to see the positive impact it has created through jobs for local artists. We believe the Boots with the Spur Project is a wonderful way to honor Steenville's traditions while making the city even more vibrant. So with this project, there will be a brochure and a website that people can go and place an order for a statue if they would like to, and once completed, the website will allow, you know, interested participants to view available local-approved artists for hire, and they can select one, call them, and then they can give them a job to come paint their statue. We're also going to be doing a residential-sized boot, too, for residents in the community to take part in the project as well. Thank you for allowing me to present to you guys. I'm so excited to see the impact this project will have on the community of Steenville.
Any questions? Thank you for what you're doing for the city. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You mentioned Granberry, so I want to mention here, a good friend of mine, David Southern, was the mayor of Granberry for several terms. He passed away about, about a year and a half ago, a year, about 15 months ago, I think. And tomorrow, they're naming the convention center after David as a, as an honor for the work he did over there. And he's, he was very progressive, not in the political sense, very forward-thinking kind of mayor, he did a good job up there, and I just want to mention that since you mentioned Granberry tonight.
Love that. Yes, we actually have a butterfly statue over there as well, so right where the doors are to the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody for general discussion? Anybody sign up? Okay, next item then, we'll be on the regular agenda. We assume is, who's going to do the computer?
Mr. Wiley.
Mr. Wiley?
Yep.
You didn't know you was going to present?
No, I didn't know I was going to speak.
Come on up here and introduce yourself. You're behind the scenes, only us that need the, need your help really know who you are.
Well, I'm James Wiley, IT manager for the city, and we've got an item on the agenda to replace the server here in City Hall that serves all the files, the Laserfish system, everything for the city. We, what we've got's getting pretty old and is kind of on its last legs, so.
Any questions for James?
This was a budgeted item in this year's budget.
It is in this year's budget.
Yeah, it is, and we're, it's actually slightly under what we asked for in the budget.
We really like that.
We may end up using the rest of it, but.
We really like it when it's.
When it's up, right. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for James? Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the purchase of the server, the new server for City Hall.
Second.
You have a motion as second. Let me see, put this down here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going to skip item two and three and go into a public hearing. The city council to consider the advisability of the creation of a reinvestment zone number three, city of Steenville, Texas, for tax increment financing purposes pursuant to chapter 311 of Texas Tax Code. And we have with us tonight, David. He is one of our best friends. Much of what we have done in the last few years is because of the work you and Natalie do. And I always give credit to Natalie, because she's the smarter one in the group, but that's okay. Now, she's, y'all have done a great job for us. I appreciate you.
Mayor Savin and members of council, thank you so much, and it's a pleasure to be here. And this is a fun time for us, because we put in these special tools throughout the state of Texas, and we exclusively work within the state of Texas, because it's so difficult to learn the ins and outs of the law when you jump over to Oklahoma, let's say Arkansas or New Mexico, because they might have a whole different set. So it's taken me 30 years to get this point to where we can say, hey, I'm confident that I know everything, and then they'll throw you a little bit of a loop. But so Natalie was down in Cleveland yesterday, and then she was in, she was up in Grayson County, and she's up at the city of Denton. So we're all over the place, and here I am, and here.
How many, how many of these agreements do you do for the state of Texas?
So we've, I've done.
Percentage-wise?
Percentage, I would say we probably do about a third.
Have a whole of them in Texas.
Of all of them in the state of Texas.
So we've got the best in Texas.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm here to talk to you tonight about a proposed tax increment reinvestment zone that we've been discussing with staff and with several people within the community and within the council regarding tax increment reinvestment zone number three. As you recall, we did our first TIF, which was the Washington Commons, which my good friend from Economic Development was there, and we had a lot of education sessions, and those sessions led us to then expand that. And so we didn't create new TIFs, we just expanded the boundary. So we have a TIF 1A, TIF 1B, TIF 1C, TIF 1D, TIF 1E, and then.
More reason than I disagree.
And we can move those funds around for public infrastructure. But finally, when we did the downtown, I said, Mayor, we need to have downtown as kind of its own TIF, and so we did TIF number two. The mayor said, well, this should be an extension of TIF 1, and sadly, I think, just for our sanity's sake, this needs to be a standalone TIF.
Natalie threatened to quit, is the problem.
Yeah, she threatened to quit, and she threatened, I do have to say that Natalie gets a lot of the credit, deservedly so, and so I'll be changing the name of the company at the end of the year to Pettit and Ayala Consulting, to acknowledge the work that she's done. Do I have a control of the PowerPoint, or can I just motion to somebody to go to the next, if you can go to the next slide? So I'm here tonight to talk to you about tax increment financing, the proposed tax increment reinvestment zone number three, and the next steps. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So tax increment financing is a tool that incentivizes economic development within a tax increment reinvestment zone. So one is the concept, the verb, and one is the noun. So you have a TIRS in concept, and you create these tax increment reinvestment zones, reinvestment zones. It's governed by the Tax Code, chapter 311. There's been hundreds of these created within the state, over 500, the last I looked. Not everybody registers with the state of Texas. But I think one of the key things here is funds are used to pay for public infrastructure and public improvements in an area, and, and the purpose of this is to attract new development, facilitate investment, and bring excitement and energy to the designated area. Next slide, please. First question I get on a TIF, is it a new tax? No, it is not a new tax. It redirects a portion of future taxes generated from new development within the TIRS. So essentially, you're drawing the boundary, you're saying through two different ways you can generate increment. And I think you know this, but for everybody else's edification, through annual appreciation of values that are in the TIF, so that 2% growth, or my home seems to grow at the 10% residential cap every year, or through new construction, that money, instead of going into the general fund, can go into a TIF fund. And depending on the participation, a portion goes to the general fund, and a portion goes. and a portion goes to the TIF fund, which can pay for public infrastructure to help pay for improvements within an area to help facilitate development. If we can go to the next slide, please. So, why create a TERs? Well, there's private development activity expected to occur within a designated area. We see this a lot, but sometimes the TIF is needed to kind of be the tipping point. I'll talk about some specifics here in a minute about the process that'll come if this is approved and how those funds are dispersed. There's two mother mayis, one to the TIF board and one to the city council. So you get two reviews of this as it moves forward. It provides a funding source without impacting the current amount of general fund revenues to the taxing entity. You have the ability to leverage revenues from taxable property within the TERs to generate a larger increment to take on some of those public infrastructure projects that maybe you can't. And I think I saw somewhere on your agenda, did you? I'll talk about some issuance of debt. This is a great way to help not do that and help fund it in-house and not put it as a part of the general fund. And a TIF, I can tell you this, attracts potential developers just as it did with Washington Commons and brings investment to an area that may not otherwise occur. We hear a lot of the times, "But four." And so the TERs can pay for infrastructure, public improvements, economic development programs, y'all familiar with those, and other projects benefiting the zone. There's often the case of the "but four", and I think probably is now a good time to say, I have heard since I've been working with you guys for how long, three, four years? That housing is one of your number one concerns. And housing is just not happening without some sort of assistance, whether that be with some sort of the artillery, roads, water, sewer, drainage, something that helps to make that happen. And so we know that this could be ripe for some single-family development and some additional commercial development. And, but I think the project is deserving of the consideration of the TIF. If we go to the next slide. The TIF, I call this the previous slide, if you can. Thank you very much. Chapter 311 outlines the two procedures for creating and amending a TERs. The two main documents, I call it the Texas Two-Step. One is what you're doing tonight, which is the creation ordinance, and then you have the TERs project and financing plan. The creation ordinance establishes five key elements. That's the boundary, the term, the TERs board, city participation, and a preliminary project and financing plan. After that plan, ordinance is approved, then the TERs creation, or after the TERs creation, a final project and financing plan is recommended by the TERs board and approved by city council. So that's the second ordinance that we look at. If we go to the next slide, please. So staff asked us to look at the specific area here. It's approximately 131 acres of undeveloped land. We dug deep into it, you can see the loop, you can see Frey Street, you can see Forest and Baccan Hill. These areas represent, particularly to the north of the loop there, some great single-family development opportunities, which I think is needed. There have been a lot of people, and I know this because the mayor and Jason have invited me to talk with a lot of people that have been interested, but they just haven't gotten over the hump of making some of these projects work. And so these are the proposed boundaries of 131 acres to create essentially this boundary and then any increment. So currently, right now, it has a de minimis value because it's just open ag land. So any new value for every $1 generated, a portion would go into the TIF fund to help pay for public infrastructure, to attract that development. Then a portion would go to the city general fund to help pay for ongoing maintenance and operation and of course, services related to that development. So the overall, if we go to the next slide, please. The overall goal is to encourage private development through infrastructure assistance that will yield additional tax revenues. Because currently, we're getting nothing there. I always like to say, whatever your participation, you know, 60% of something's better than 100% of nothing. And so this consists of 131 acres. The base value would be as, if it's approved tonight, as of January 1, 2024. We're looking at a 35-year term. There's some other tools that are out there that could benefit this, primarily a public improvement district. It's like an HOA where they can put an assessment on themselves and on the homeowner and that can help pay for the roads, water, sewer, and the TIF can help offset that. So we're looking at a 35-year term with that terminating on December 31, 2059. And as you know how taxes work, we send out the bill on October 1. It's not due until October 31st. So to help my attorney friends here, we say, we're going to collect in the following year. So, because you could potentially have a 34-year TIF if you terminated December 31, 2059, if that makes sense. So, we're proposing a city participation rate just because of the importance of this and the importance of attracting single-family development in this area of 60%. And I can also tell you that we have done a number of these just for single-family and 40% is more than enough to cover the necessary services. You're talking police, fire, code compliance, those type of things within that. So currently, we don't have anything, so you need a catalytic project to kind of kick off and show that the market's viable. And so hopefully, by putting this TIF in and using some other tools going forward, we can do that. Go to the next slide, please. So, our task was to come up with projections. And we see this as being very, with the use of the TIF, fruitful and have potential for $191 million worth of development, excuse me, in today's dollars. So that's in today's dollars. As you can see, majority of that value comes from single-family and multifamily development. If you're looking at the area, I did not see a whole lot of sales tax generating properties. There's a bank over there that has high value. It's a little off the beaten path, so a lot of times we'll talk about QSRs, quick service retail. So you have a lot of sales taxes being generated off of it. I see this solely as a real property investment coming along the lines of the single-family. We have seen several different site plans for this area with the single-family, the townhomes, and obviously, the multifamily. The commercial are basically large, you know, banks and others. And you can see that they're not insignificant, but they're not moving the needle quite like the single-family and the multifamily development. You can see, so that bank that's over there, I was really surprised because typically I'll see a bank comes in around 550, 600,000 for one of their standalone, like a Texas Bank or Wells Fargo or Chase or whatever. But that one was coming in at a million. So, pretty nice piece of property. But they're taking about an acre, acre and a half, and you can get multiple homes in there at about that same price range. So if you're looking at a cost-benefit analysis, now they do come with the services, citizens do. And so that's why we're saying, let's set aside that 40%. If we can go to the next slide, please. So within the creation ordinance, we're proposing the city of Stevieville would contribute 60% of its real property increment within the zone above the 2024 base. The anticipated development, now once again, this is anticipated. So my crystal ball, I've been doing this for quite a while. It can be pretty good, but sometimes it can be off a year or two, but don't let that distract you. Well, we're really, we're creating the mechanism and the timing of this. It's going to be market-dependent and what kind of deals can we strike if we are able to put this TIF together? So there's a lot of steps after just the creation. But over that 35-year term, we project to generate 27.8 million in TERs revenue to fund project cost or public infrastructure during that term. So, in the grand scheme of things, what we're doing is that we're looking at drawing a boundary around this area, creating the TIF, very popular, very well-used, and basically saying, we're not getting any revenue now. The revenue that comes here, we're going to put 60% of that back into public infrastructure and the other 40% is going to go to the general fund. So, I think of it as a simple concept, but I'm also here to answer questions. Now, the next slide, we have to put together a budget. And working with staff, we think we've come up with an overall budget, but once again, don't let this hamper you because it's really the cap that we're looking at, the 27.8. We can move within these line items and adapt as projects come forward. as we talk about the total cost of 27.8, if every time that we put one of these together, and like I said, my crystal ball, I don't know what a developer's going to need as far as roads, water, sewer, infrastructure. We can also get grants. And so we like to propose this menu of items. And, but savings from one item can go up to cost savings in another line item. However, this does serve as a cap. So it would require an amendment to this ordinance if you were to exceed this dollar amount. And typically, we look at these as a page you go. In certain circumstances, paired with a public improvement district, there can be an issuance of debt, but that is not any debt that would be related to the city. So, once again, very common mechanism that's been used across the state. And we've been fortunate to be involved in about half of those. So our proposed next steps, I'm here to answer questions and open the public hearing, the public hearing tonight in consideration. This ordinance, if we go to the next slide, please, establishes five key elements. So what we're doing tonight is we're doing the boundary, we're establishing the term, we're establishing the TERs board. We recommend the city council being the TERs board because per statute, it can be between five and 15 members and you can get a whole different group, but they're just making a recommendation because the final authority rests with you and we have just found it more efficient. And I think we've seen that with other TIFs that we've created, TIF 1A through F and TIF 2 that they are recommending to themselves. The city participation and then a preliminary project and financing plan. Upon the TERs creation, we like to have a TERs board meeting in the spring and bring back the final project and financing plan for ordinance consideration in the spring. And then the real work begins. And like I like to say, there's those two mother mayis. So once the ordinance, both ordinances are in place, you don't have anything. The land's still vacant. Jeff's got to get out there, Jason's got to get out there, kicks and tires. What projects do we have available and what is the funding need that we have for those projects? And they'll be evaluated and then brought to the TIF board for the first mother mayi and then the second mother mayi to the city council. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, just information for the citizens and those on the boards, council that's not participated in the TERs that we've done. Harbin Drive is a result of the TERs. That was $19 million, ended up being like 19 million bucks, Jason? And some of that money came out of water sewer because we did some water sewer projects there as well. But that is obvious, and then Tarleton participated some with this, I think about right at $2 million bucks. And so they did their part with some stormwater on that street. But we wouldn't have Harbin Drive between Washington and Bobbitt, Glasgow and Cleveland without creating the TERs. So, you know, it's been a great thing for us, for the city of Stevieville. And I think, if I did some numbers correctly, if this project comes out to be true, 190 million bucks, give or take?
190 million in today's dollars.
In today's dollars, that would be almost a 10% increase in add valorem values in the city of Stevieville. Our total values right now are 2.1 billion, I think. So it'd be about 9% increase in values. So that's the spur that gets us to be able to do other projects. And what it does is if we spur some product there, then we've got 40%, we can spend wherever. You know, and we don't even have to spend 60%. That's a council decision, but it gives us that 27 million bucks over there, that's 35 years. But what, about 18 million dollars then that we'd have to spend on other streets and infrastructure in city Stevieville.
And we take that very serious in the cost-benefit, how much money is being retained by the city? And a lot of people ask, well, developers, shouldn't they have to pay for this? Well, obviously, it's not moving at the velocity I think the city or even myself would like to see as far as new housing construction. Even in cities, I've done close to six TIFs in Salina, Texas. It's one of the fastest-growing cities, Grand Prairie, Arlington, Fort Worth. Everybody's using this mechanism. Now, it requires some cost-benefit analysis and we don't want to give the developer a free ride. But if there's an impediment, we now have a mechanism to use it. The best project to come forward in a TIF is one that doesn't ask for any of that money.
Absolutely.
So we can use that to other infrastructure. And so I think it's a careful balance. And so I think that there's enough belts and suspenders with those two mother mayis as you kind of go forward. But this is showing that those property owners with that, within that area, that the city's dedicated and we're willing to make this happen and we're putting our money where our mouth is. And now it's fictional money, right? Until something gets built, because like I said, you know, 100% of nothing is nothing. And so we're talking about putting 60% in the TIF and 40% going to the general fund. So I think the cost-benefit proves that out and I think that it's going to give a real shot in the arm to getting one of these single-family developments going, and that's the catalytic. Now, do you have to do it for all of them? They come across the board? No. But I think it's really key that we put our best foot forward and this is one of the best opportunities that we have.
Well, one council member, one of the councilors not here tonight, had to be out of town, is a mortgage broker and he says he has 60 loans that he's already pre-approved for construction. I was like, 60 or 30? 30. It's a large amount of people who are waiting to build houses and there's not enough houses being built. Jason and I had coffee with a builder who's been here for 50 years, building, 55 years? And I asked, I said, if you could buy, he said, what's going on? I said, well, it's slowing down, I can't find any lots, all these just infill lots. You know, and where people haven't built in the past and they've got 30-year-old houses on the side. Who's going to build a half million, a million-dollar house in the middle of that? He said, not burdening people. I said, well, if you had a development come up, what would you do? He said, buy 10 lots tonight. I said, 10? He said, well, maybe 20. So that's the interest in the city of Stevieville. And whether you're talking to Tarleton, whether you're talking to FMC, St. Albans, any of them. Well, now FMC's technit now. We talked to any of those businesses, they all say one of the biggest, and the hospital too, one of the biggest impediments to growth in those industries is affordable housing. People are living in Brock, they're living in Lipan, they're living everywhere else besides Stevieville because of affordable housing.
And I think it's kind of like when we looked at Washington Commons and I want to turn to my friend Jeff, because we had, when you're looking at where your retailer was going, it was going to Brownwood to shop, it was going to Granberry to shop. And we were able to use this mechanism to say, okay, you shop here. And as far as I know, it's doing quite well and it's paying 100% of that bond. So that's paying for Harbin Road and it's also providing for, you know, the incentive that made that project happen. So it's, the cost-benefit has far exceeded what our original projections were. And so I think this is just another one of those things. And I also want to explain single-family development because the commercial development, I think, is kind of just an outgrowth of this and kind of, I don't want to say an afterthought because it's along the road there and it's logical that there'll be some commercial development. But when you're doing home development, it requires you to get a loan to put in the roads, water, sewer, infrastructure to build the lots. And right now, they're dirt loans and so that requires equity. And so that's the hardest part you're getting if you don't have a proven market that can take production like this. So it requires some sort of TIF assistance to say, oh, okay, you got another partner at the table and that partner's the city.
Well, Jeff and I met with a large grocery company, national brand. And we tried to push some, consider that part of Stevieville to build in. And the first question he asked was, how many houses are within, you know, 200, 300 yards? None. And he said, well, I'm not used to there then, so let's go look someplace else. And so that housing, as soon as they find out that there's this, the one that we already know about, Jason, is 121 houses, I think? Jason? 121 houses in that development. Hundred and twenty-one houses in that development on?
At least.
Yeah, okay, so about a hundred and twenty houses there and that's just half of it. And if that happens, then you've got forty acres or thirty-five acres in front of that, there'll be a prime commercial, roster, it'll get finished, et cetera. So that's really the spur here is what we're dealing with tonight is, are we going to create a mechanism that allows us to incentivize people to come and invest hundreds of millions of dollars in Steenville, Texas? And so anybody with that, anybody have any questions for David? He is the expert, other than Natalie, I mean.
Yes, and I'm sorry that you got the, the second, the second best of the team.
Well, she happens to have done, if you've not been, if you've been to Fort Worth, if you go down where the hospital district is, that's called Fort Worth South, that's a, that's a TIF, or TIRS district. And it's one of eleven they have downtown, I think?
There's fifteen TIFs.
Fifteen now, or eleven, I don't remember, that's number eleven, I can't remember. And that's, and so if you want to see what's, what's able to even take, like, we have one for downtown now. And that whole downtown Fort Worth looks cool now and it was because of this very district and they were able to do all kinds of things like what your building looks like, how you access it and so on and.
Another good example is Veridian, which is right across thirty in Arlington, which has been a huge, it's right next to a landfill and nobody thought that, who would want to live next to a landfill, but they're paying, you know, seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars to live next to a landfill and that was because of the TIF. And it was called Lakes of Birdfort, it was a flood plain and brought it out with the flood plain because they needed houses north of thirty, right across from that entertainment district. So it's a, it's a well-known, well-vetted mechanism that a lot of people have been there and, and done that, but I think that this has just taken a step in the right direction.
I'm sorry, any questions for David? Hearing now will enter the public hearing, have anybody that wants to come speak in favor or in opposition to the ordinance? Hearing now will close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance pursuant to chapter three eleven of Texas tax code, creating tax increment financing reinvestment zone number three, city of Steenville, which would be ordinance twenty-two-four-zero-thirty-five. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance twenty-two-four-thirty-five.
Is that right?
Yes.
Is that you, Leanne?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion, second, further discussion.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions.
Ask away.
I'm, I'm curious, we, we had another development on the north side of town off of Pigeon Road and that development is, is also a large development, maybe not quite as large as I'm looking at in all these acres, but it's a good-sized development.
Twenty-nine houses.
How much of the, how much assistance did they request?
None.
And so the developer is, is bearing a hundred percent of that on their own to put in the development for the profit margin that's in that development.
But they have a different kind of mark, a different kind of project.
It, it is different, but it is still the same principle. The developer is, is paying the bills and taking the risks, but he also has all the profit that, that is made from that.
Correct.
That's, that's always been my concern for incentives of any kind, and that's what this is. It's an incentive for developers, in this case multiple, to develop properties and the city's providing assistance to them, which helps their bottom line, helps their profit margin. And I, I struggle with that because traditionally, at least here, the developer has, has borne the burden and paid the cost to put in the infrastructure. The city has provided the, the services and water, wastewater, et cetera, and police, fire, oh, those things, but the developers have always borne that cost and, and sometimes struggled, but generally always made a profit at it one way or the other, if it was one house or ten or, or a hundred. And it concerns me. It did at the time when we established the first TIRS and we've set a precedent now and now we're having, we're looking at the same thing going on again, different area, different developers, but it just concerns me that the city subsidizes some developers and not others. And we've had another, a number of other developers that have come and done other developments and haven't come asking for any assistance. So that's, that's just my, my concern, my thought on that.
I understand that, Alan, and I'll tell you, we would not have Hobby Lobby, we would not have Old Navy, all that, what is it, Jason, or just twelve stores in there that has about right now thirty million dollars in value to it and sales, there's no telling how many millions of dollars in sales tax, that would not be there. We wouldn't have Chick-fil-A, we wouldn't have McAllisters, and now we has a public, right across the street is a public now and then, Cavenders is coming to town. All that stuff happens because of the TIF. We would still be driving down a country road that has chip seal on it that you complain about all the time, down called Harbin Drive. We still have all that issue going on. We'd have stormwater issues now that would be flooding across the street because of the development out north of there. So we have all that stuff going on had we not created a TIF. And so the, the growth in Steenville, Texas has not always been attributed to that, but I'll tell you, it's a large tribute. And I'll, I'll tell you, I do a lot of, nothing like Jason, Jason or Jeff do, talk to the businesses, but they often all want to say, I want to talk to the mayor. And I'll tell you, that's the first question, first question they all ask that is, what is, what's Kansas City going to put in? In the long run, if this occurs and we get the hundred and ninety-one million dollars of construction, the city will get around eighteen million dollars to spend on other street projects that you're in charge of that we wouldn't have otherwise, we would not have that. And so is, is it a necessary, is it evil? No, it's not evil, but is it necessary? That's how the growth is going to be if you don't. We'll look like, and she's, I think she's back there, we'll look like Dublin. We'll look like Comanche, we'll look like some of those other entities that have no growth. And right now, in, in January, I gave, began a speech again at the opt at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and I'll tell you that, that is where it's happened. We have created, just like David said earlier, people were driving through Steenville to get to Granberry, or they're driving through Steenville to get to Weatherford, and now Steenville's a destination. And that kind, I, I first heard that term when Dr. Tobio was the president of Tarleton and he say, called me one morning about six-thirty, he says, come on, you and Cheryl, come go with me, we're on Fort Worth. I said, what are you doing? He said, well, we got his wife, Lesa, who was a friend of Cheryl, so we're going to go to these five stores and while we're there, we're going to go to eat restaurant, at this restaurant and stuff. And I said, well, but we've got half those stores here. He says, yeah, but we're going to make a day of it. And that, that destination shopping is what created Weatherford, it's what created Granberry and it's what's now creating Steenville, Texas. Is it something I love to do? No, it's not. It's not, but I tell you, right now, the realtors, I've talked to a couple of realtors who said, I can sell fifty houses tomorrow if we had the houses. Nobody's investing that much. All we have is infill houses, infill lots. And we'll do something, then we're going to look like we do right here today and then when the police department, bless his heart, is asking for, we need about, what, a million dollars more for police and fire raises only?
Is that right, Jason?
A million bucks? Where are we going to get that? We ain't. Just be, this is vernacular, it ain't going to happen. So we've got to grow, either we're going to have to take for every citizen a bigger piece of their pie and their, their tax rate will go up. Or what we're going to have to do is we're going to grow the pie and get the same size slice of, of bigger pie. And that's what's happened the last seven years, six years in city of Steenville. And the city's economy has grown from when you and I, when I first got on council, our sales tax was about three and a half million bucks. What's it now, Jason?
About nine and a half.
Nine and a half million, so it's gone up seven, six million bucks. What's our ad valorem tax gone up? It was under, you're right at four million dollars collections, what is it now?
Little over seven.
Seven million bucks? So we've gone up, we've grown our economy now, the collections in Steenville are around eleven million dollars more money to spend out of our thirty-five million dollar budget. So the growth has created a third of our revenue for what we're doing today in Steenville, Texas. And so is it, is it a great opportunity? It's, it is the only opportunity we have. If we don't do this, Steenville will sit the way it is today, just like it did the twenty-five years before when we were afraid to look at what does Steenville need to look like? And how much are we behind now? What was our, our, our infrastructure needs right now? The total was two hundred and what, million?
Probably between, probably two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty million dollars we have today, we have no revenue to pay for, zero, zero. And part of it's because we weren't creative, we weren't willing to do some things and we've become willing to do some of those things in the last six, since I've been there. And it's, we have got to get this done. Kenny Wells used to talk about this all the time and he goes, and you've got to start looking differently. And we've done that and David's helped us, David and Natalie, has helped us with that. And that's where we've gotten the growth is because of our willingness to go out and get businesses to come to Steenville, Texas. And I can tell you, there's a bunch of big ones sitting out there right now. Potentially, we talked to one, Jason and I did, and he said, we'll sell a hundred and fifty million dollars in sales every year. Hundred and fifty million dollars in sales. Had one and a half cents of that, is how much? That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. Pays for a lot of police department, pays for a lot of water, well, not water sewer, we should be able to do that on our own. We'll do all kinds of things and we've got to grow. And if we don't, I want everybody out there to know your tax rate's going to go up. It's going to have to. Just inflation itself is running, but how much inflation, you're, you're a salesman back there?
A lot.
Seven, eight percent? Our, our income is not going up seven, eight percent. We've got to, we've got to, this, this is a business line the city of Steenville's getting in and we're partnering with some people. I don't mean to haggle at all, I'm just like, that's why we have to do this, in my opinion.
Mayor, if I can just tell you that other cities that we've looked at, we're doing Bay City, which had huge economic wins. They had a Teneres plant that came over Finland, but they have no homes. And they say our number one priority is homes. We want people to live here because they're living in Houston and commuting to Bay City. And from what I hear and what you have, the great things that you have going on with Tarleton, with the hospital, with the other economic employers, your problem is housing and you talk to realtors and that's what it is. And so that's what this is trying to do.
Is it, where is it that, we, we met with Elon Musk's vice president when we were in Corpus. What's the town just south of here?
Well, McGregor.
McGregor makes every rocket that SpaceX uses to put a spaceship in the air, McGregor, Texas. And what it took was the city of McGregor creating a TIF to create, buy some land and make a deal for Elon Musk to come up there and now, how many hundreds of millions of dollars is he investing there right now? It's so bad, the highway department's trying to figure out how they're going to build better highways to get it all in and out, you know, and, and that's a guy that, he will be, he will be our first world trillionaire and he invested in McGregor, Texas. Because the city of McGregor went out there and said, we want you to come to our city and we'll, we'll help you get here. Do you think he needed that? Did he need the infrastructure? He didn't. He said, but I've got forty other towns that won't. And so that's what's happening right now. And Jeff will tell you and Jason will tell you, the first thing they do when they walk in the doors, they say, what kinds of incentives do you have to help with your part of the participation in this project? Every one of them say that, every one of them. I'm sorry, Leanne, you had a question?
No, I just wanted to say one thing. Whenever you said it bothered you with the incentives, whenever I first got on council and we had our first TIF meeting and everything, I mean, I didn't, I'd never heard anything about this. So Jeff was kind enough to give me a crash course on it, which is, it's, there's no incentive. They're still paying for everything on their own. We're not giving them a discount or anything, we're not anything. It just means that we get that money back and can only spend it in that area. So it's really, I mean.
That's a good point.
It's not an incentive at all. It's really just saying, come here, we're going to help you with this, but you're going to pay for all of it. It just means that we get the money out of it and we can only spend it in that area.
Oh, the sixty percent in this case?
So, yes, sixty percent of it we can spend in that area. So then it kind of changed my viewpoint on it.
That's one of the reasons for one A, B, C through F is the money stays in that district, but it can flow between, if we pay off that infrastructure in A, we can move it to B and as long as the TIF, the thirty-dollar, thirty years or twenty-five years, whatever that TIF is, we're able to move that. So we're able then to dedicate infrastructure dollars that the Steenville, Steenville, Texas does not have right now. We don't have the money. We just don't. And so that allows us to create some funds and move funds around. That is the future of our town, in my opinion. Now, that's just one gallon out of nine up here, one gallon, gallon up here. Any other questions, comments?
Call a question, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. David, appreciate you. Consider approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five on-call public works construction items contract. There you go, Nick. You're getting to be as bad as Steve on every agenda now.
That is a tough item to follow.
Steve or the TIF?
All the above, yes, sir. So we've done this kind of mechanism since 2017, the on-call contract, what it does allows us to bid out projects, I'm sorry, let me start over. What we do is we put out a, an item for bid and so typically things like head walls, curb and gutter, sidewalk, even brick street repair, some of those kind of things that we have a hard time getting three bids for. What we do is we take this bid here and what we do is we put together projects with best value and lowest cost and then we use those to go do these smaller sidewalk or curb and gutter projects. And that's what you have here before you this evening. On November twelfth, we opened up the latest version of that and got three bids, one from Cruz Hernandez Concrete Construction, West Hill and Sullivan Contracting as well. And so we're just simply asking for an award to all three of those vendors that allows us to use this flexible tool to put together these contracts or put together these work directives that we use to do these smaller projects. And if this is approved, the next item, we'll talk about using this mechanism to finally complete that parking lot in front of the rec hall.
Questions for Nick? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the on-call public works, that's presented, contract that's presented.
Second. Got you, Alan? Motion is second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Okay, so moving on to the next item, this work directive that you have in front of you is a result of the on-call public works construction items contract. We, we had previously tried to get some bids for this parking lot in front of the rec hall and just, I mean, they were astronomical and so what, what we did is we used the numbers from the bid, we put together this, this work directive and it came out to thirty-eight thousand nine fifty, which was just a little bit more than half of some of the other numbers that we'd received previously. So we're very excited about the ability to do that. One very cool thing about this on-call contract allows us to have some flexibility in how we put these projects together. If, if this goes through, what we would do for those parking stalls in front of the rec hall is we'd use that historic Thurber brick to make those parking stripes. And so, great news, we never have to paint again and it looks really cool next to all the work that we just did on Long Street. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Nick?
The, the parking spaces themselves are cement, right?
Concrete, yes, sir.
Concrete.
Yes, sir, you're, I see what you did there.
But the lines will be permanent because they are made from the brick.
Yes, sir. And there's an adjacent crosswalk as well and we'll use that Thurber brick on that crosswalk and I think it'll look tremendous.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the on-call project at the rec hall for parking line improvements.
Did you vote for the first part?
Second.
Have a motion, lawns, seconds it?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jason, you want to handle the next one?
Mr. Killen and Pastor.
Come on up, Steve. It's only opportunity this week.
I use one item tonight, Mayor Council, appreciate the time to be here. Pastor Ed Dipforth, representing Cornerstone Church, is requesting a waiver of all development fees for the expansion project at nine fifty Glen Rose Road. In your packet, there's a document, he's provided us a site plan showing where the expansions and the tabernacle's going to go. This is for the construction of a seven thousand square foot activity center and then a twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty square foot tabernacle that will have a dirt floor. The fee analysis for this, when we consider what we would call soft fees, which are basically plan review fees and a couple of minor waiver applications that they've already paid for, the soft total, uh, subtotal fees would be eleven thousand, four hundred, twenty-four dollars. And that's broken down for you, uh, by each permit and review type. And then there are some hard costs that could be considered as well. That was for the civil review, um, which is a third-party pass-through fee. That fee was five thousand, two hundred, sixty-nine dollars. If you add the soft cost and the hard cost together, we're talking about sixteen thousand, six hundred, ninety-three dollars. And I do see that the pastor is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. And I too will attempt to answer any questions that you may have regarding the fee analysis. Uh, but certainly we defer to him on the project itself.
Questions for Steve?
Uh, Mr. Killen, the, the civil review is not done by in-house staff. That is done by a professional firm that the city contracts with. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's a third-party review and we just pass that cost, uh, through the, the city to the developer.
Okay, but the city is responsible to, to pay that cost, which normally goes through to the developer. But in this case, the, the city is responsible for it either way.
Yes, sir. That, that would actually be a hard cost that the city would absorb if it was to be waived by the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ed, you'll speak this? No sermons? No college lectures either.
Literally, we had a candlelight communion service one year for Christmas Eve and it went short. And I said something to my own mother, I hope that wasn't too short. And she literally tapped me on the arm and said, honey, no one is concerned about it being too short. So. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for your labor of love and what you do for our city. Um, nine fifty Glen Rose, where is that? Just off the South Loop. We used to have to say across the street from the jail. Now we say down from Heart Day BBQ.
There you go.
Who we are. At ninety-eight, I was given the honor of being the lead pastor there. We're an eclectic church. Every racial profile, every economic profile, every age, uh, attends there. We're a regional church. Folks come in from every county that touches Eret County and Steenville. What we're about. I'm thankful we have a lot of our leadership team that's here today. They surprised me by being here. But we wanna serve this community. And, uh, one of the best gifts I got, uh, was the Sunday before Thanksgiving. I asked everybody to stand and tell somebody else what they're thankful for and what a favorite side dish they had won for Thanksgiving. An eleven-year-old girl came to the front and handed me a piece of paper. And she said, I'm thankful for you and this church. And I'm glad I didn't read it until after service because I was undone to have an eleven-year-old. And she caught the vision of what we wanna be at Cornerstone, to serve, um, this community. The wind, uh, the silt fence is down, uh, the tractor's on the ground. We start the detention pond. The staff has given us the go-ahead for that, so we start that detention pond, uh, this week to go ahead. And grateful for this community, grateful for the opportunity to, to serve. And I'd answer any direct questions y'all have and would appreciate your consideration.
In this building, would you all be allowing others outside your congregation to use it?
Yes, sir.
Give some examples of what that might, uh, what's the size of the facility again is.
Right. So it's kind of amazing. It's gonna be, if you can imagine, three-quarters of an acre under roof. So it'll be a seven thousand square foot activity center. We've never had a place where we could gather and have a meal. Do you have a basketball court in? That has already come up, Coach. And, uh, and, uh, it's gonna have a commercial kitchen in, in the back. And then, uh, the tabernacle will be an open-air area to where we can do concerts and all kinds of things. In the past, we've been able to be blessed to do water distributions, distributions and food distribution, things like that. Fifth quarter events, our all-hands meeting for our police, uh, stop the bleed training. Every now and the week, we have teams, uh, out on, on our, on our facility. And we're so grateful for that. It feels like it springs life, whether it be a, a Pee-wee football team or a softball team on the field. We wanna be embedded into the daily life of this community.
Well, I think it gives them facilities to access to the city of Steeple that we're not having to pay for.
Yes, sir.
That's why I asked the question. Is it, is it something that we're gonna be able to use as well?
Yes, sir.
Any other que- any questions for Steve or for Ed? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the requesting a waiver of the development fees for, uh, Cornerstone Church.
Second.
A motion is second. Any more discussion? Are you none? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Consider approval, waiver of all development fees for expansion proj- oh, that's it. There you go. I, I have two things, two parts, one stuff. Mitch Cook, Development Services Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Development Services Committee met and, and, uh, at, uh, last month, discussed the, uh, permitted uses, conditional uses, with, uh, it had to do with a non, uh, with the auto-related, uh, auto paint and body shop that, uh, we had discussed before. We were asked to consider this again by one of the members of the council. And so the committee met to discuss that. We've, we have, we did do some discussion with regard to this. And by unanimous vote, the committee asked that, uh, staff, please bring proposed revisions to chapter one fifty-four, uh, of the, in relation to conditional use permits in the B two and the retail commercial district. Paint and body shops are not allowed in, in B two right now and it's kind of a, one of those strange things. But, uh, anyway, we've asked that the, uh, staff make some recommendations to us and propose revisions to that particular thing. This will be presented in January at the committee meeting that we have. And will be discussed at that time. And, and, uh, if the committee still chooses, then they will forward on to this council for, uh, for approval or denial. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, Domestics Committee.
Perfect. Alright, so is that time of year again where we get to appoint and reappoint everybody who serves on our boards and commissions for the city of Steenville? Um, we only have one that needs, uh, an interview tonight, which is for the Steeple Economic and Development Service or Development Committee. And, um, we have Mon- uh, Mindy Woolley.
No.
Her sister-in-law.
Who cannot?
Bear with me, please, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's Connie. Everybody knows Connie.
Connie Woolley here. She is applying for place two on the Steeple Economic Development Committee that is taking place. She is filling in for Malcolm Cross, whose term has expired. Uh, so.
Oh, you didn't tell me they expire. Okay.
It's not lifetime.
Okay, okay.
You won't want it to be lifetime.
Okay.
Can you please let us know your address, please?
Yes, I am Connie Woolley. I live at twelve fifty North Wildwood Drive, Steenville, Texas.
And have you served on any boards or commissions before? If so, which ones?
Like, I mean, within the city?
City, yes.
Okay, no, I have not.
Uh, what makes you wanna serve on SEDO now?
Well, I'm really fired up now. Now that we've had our speaker here talk about the TIF, since I'm, this is my town. I grew up here. I've been here a long, long time. I love this town. I love all of you. I love everything about it. And I've never been invited to do this before. And now that I've heard what we can do and I'm so excited about the things Coach Reisman put into action when he was at Tarleton and by golly, I wanna be a part of it. I feel like, I may be kidding myself at seventy-two, but I feel like I still have viable, um, things I can give. And I feel that my banking, fifty years of banking service, I can help with the fiscal side and I'm just honored that you all would consider me.
We're lucky to have you.
Oh, you're funny.
To take your statement, this is my town says a lot. And we're grateful to have you and will you deserve.
Well, thank you. Yes, I would love to. I'm honored to be asked.
Any questions for Connie?
Connie, with your limited experience in the banking industry, I'm thrilled that you would consider this because there, there's a significant amount of work and I think Jeff will bear that out, that needs to be done. Uh, we need good members on the board with, with good level heads. And, and your experience, honestly, your experience in the banking industry will be a significant addition to that board and help things move forward in that area. I appreciate you. I appreciate all you've done for our community through the years. And thank you for being willing to step forward as someone that's nearly as mature as you. I think we do still have things that we can offer the community and I appreciate that.
You're not very much younger than she is.
Yes, yes. But I have banked all of you at one point in my life, so.
And our kids.
She has all of her secrets.
Yes. I, and, well, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Watch Leanne's credit rating. I don't know about that.
I know confidentiality. And I am proud of the fact that I, I can be very confidential. Just ask my husband. So, yes, I'm very proud to have your confidence.
And don't tell Jeff anything he doesn't need to know.
I won't.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? But I'd like to make a motion that we approve Connie Woolley for place two on the Steeple Economic Development Authority.
Second.
Thank y'all.
There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The only thing is, you can tell him no.
Yes, I can do that.
Alright, you, you've told my daughter that once.
She tells her husband no.
Alright, so the rest of the boards and commissions, I would just, they're presented here. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the board members for the boards and commissions as presented.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That is all I have. And thank you so much for everyone who's willing to serve.
Quit buttering her up. It won't work. Next item is public health. We have two council members on that committee that are not here tonight. Uh, so I'm gonna let Jason mention it.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, back at our committee meetings, uh, earlier this month, uh, Chief Harris presented two changes to the parking ordinance, one on, uh, Long Street, one on Ray Street. Uh, the committee voted to push those forward to council with a positive recommendation. Uh, if you have any questions about those, Captain Walker is here and able to answer those to see.
Captain Walker just can't wait to get up here and answer questions. Any questions for Captain?
Do we know when this will take effect? Sorry. I know you hate to come.
No, it's fine. Absolutely. No, it would be, uh, I mean, it would be essentially be immediately. So part of the parking that we've requested, right, we're allowed to submit some of those, put the parking regulations in place prior to approval. Part of that is Long Street. The signs have been out kinda as a test, as a test phase. And so half of Long Street has been out for a couple of months. Seen a lot of success from that. And so now we'll, we're asking to extend Long Street all the way west to Lillian. And then the other part is, that we're asking for is over at the, uh, on Ray Street near the purple rail, which is, we've, has generated a lot of complaints. Um, and so we're just trying to do our best to, to help the citizens out as much as possible.
Any other questions? Okay, consider approval of amending section seventy-five oh-two of the Code of Ordinances, revised schedule two. Uh, no parking zones. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Is that you, Gerald?
Yeah, it was me.
There is a second.
Second.
Captain, you're popular tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I told you it's gonna be.
Cause I was the shortest one.
There you go. That's, we all like you.
You do great.
Monica.
Mayor Council, this is the financial report for, uh, October, uh, first month of the new fiscal year. We received four hundred and thirty-seven thousand in property tax in the month of October. That's a hundred and four thousand over, um, last October. The amount collected is six percent of our budget and that's about sixty-two thousand less than anticipated. So we're into a little slow start. However, for our sales tax, we received eight hundred and thirty-four in October, which is seventy-one thousand or eight percent less than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. It's nine percent of our budget, but it's also seventy thousand higher than we anticipated. So they kinda wash each other out. Of the three million dollar revenue received to date, fifty-one percent was received in the general fund. Thirty-five percent was received in our water wastewater fund. Six percent was received in our landfill, three percent for storm and two percent for our airport. We received eight percent of our total budgeted revenue. That's a hundred and twenty-two thousand more than anticipated and that's due to taxes, licenses and permits, fines and fourth fatures and other revenue. We received a hundred and forty thousand more, uh, revenue than last October. And that's due to taxes, licenses and permits and charges, charges for services. Of the three point five million spent to date, fifty-four was spent, expended in the general fund. Forty percent was expended in the wastewater fund. Two percent was expended in landfill fund and the hot fund. And then one percent was expended in our storm fund and our airport fund. We've expended seven percent of our total, uh, budget expenditures in October. That's five hundred and eighty-three thousand less than anticipated. That's due to personnel, contractual and, and capital outlay. We're just, you know, off to a slow start. Um, we spent two point six million more on expenditures through October than last fiscal year to date. If you'll look at that, you'll see like a, a negative for last October. That has to do with some accruals related to audit, um, of changing when something was paid for. So really, it, when you net that out, it's only about a one point four million variance compared to the prior year. SEDO has received an overall nine percent of budgeted revenue through October. That's six thousand less than the last fiscal year to date and three thousand more than anticipated.
You can't spend as much, Jason.
They've spent an overall seven percent of budgeted expenditures in October. That's fifty-six thousand more than last fiscal year to date due to grant dispersments and capital outlay and eight thousand less than anticipated due to contractual and capital outlay. Any questions?
Questions for Monica? As always, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item is consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, we had Christmas Bill this last weekend and so had a great turnout for that. And so I wanna thank Mr. Brown and his staff, uh, for putting all the details together and then our police and fire departments for, uh, helping take care of protecting everything. Our public works department, uh, for coming in over the holiday weekend as well and helping block the streets. But overall, it was a fantastic event. This Monday will be Holly Jolly Christmas downtown. Uh, will be going on. And then on December thirteenth will be the, uh, our employee Christmas lunch. And I believe you all got an email this week, uh, making sure you were invited to that. Uh, city offices will be closed, uh, on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, uh, for the Christmas holiday. And again, on January first for New Year's Day to make our next meeting, uh, Tuesday, January seventh of twenty twenty-five. And this Friday, uh, our Yellow Jackets will be headed to Midland. And I know a lot of folks will be headed out that way. And then on Saturday, uh, the Texans are headed up to South Dakota.
You just stole my thunder.
Play in the second round of the FCS playoffs.
Think, think fast.
You think you.
But you're not anymore. You're not.
Well, I know, but I mean.
Anything else, Jason?
No, sir.
Leanne?
Well, he basically just stole my entire write-up. Now I know how everybody on that side of you feels.
We're gonna move you down there now.
Welcome to the club.
But I will add that Christmas Bill was on the, um, small business Saturday. And I want to encourage everyone to continue supporting our local businesses, which are the heartbeat of our community. And good luck to the Yellow Jackets and safe travels to everyone that's going to Midland. And good luck to Tarleton and everyone that's traveling to South Dakota. And the, sorry, one last thing. The Light of the Night Christmas Celebration starts December sixth and runs through the twenty-second. It's the Eret County United Way fundraiser and it is at the park, so.
Everybody out here just cussed you because you took my thunder on the same.
Sorry.
I'm telling you, where's the feeling from people?
That's right. Gerald?
That was mine.
You were going short tonight?
I'm really short, only, well, since you mentioned it. I'll tell you what, it was kinda nice. You know, we've got two, uh, teams right now in the playoffs. One in college, division one, which is fantastic, FCS. And I understand that the, that the, uh, uh, the, uh, football field in Vermillion, South Dakota is indoors.
It's a dome.
So, hey, that might be pretty good. It might be terrible getting there, but I mean, other than that, the other thing is the, of course, the, with the Yellow Jackets, again, uh, one of eight teams left in the state. Uh, and, uh, so we're coming down to it here pretty quick. Pretty nice thing and it's, and if you look, uh, if you look on the internet and things like that, these guys are all getting, uh, played up and, and, uh, nominated for different things. And, and, uh, it's, it's just kinda nice to see that it's coming from Steenville, you know? So positive things. City of champions, city of lights, city of Christmasville and so forth.
Wow.
Long go.
Wow. Um, I'm not, so I wanna talk about football. I'll talk about basketball.
There you go.
And so the Steeple Yellow Jackets varsity boys basketball team is four and oh, undefeated. Going into tonight's game at seven-thirty.
So you need to get out of here pretty quick.
Uh, it's a nice, a good season. Watching my grandson is a ninth grader and they put him on varsity. So I've enjoyed watching him play his first varsity game.
Is he as tall as you and his dad?
He's about as tall as I am now.
He's about as tall as I am now. Yeah, 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 so. But, I think it's one of the first starts they've ever had, four and oh, in Stephenville. So I'm really happy for the Yellow Jackets football and basketball teams. And I'm excited for Todd Witten to head to Vermillion, South Dakota, and play in the dome and pull one of the biggest upsets of the year off.
And who hired Todd?
I did a long, a while back.
Matty.
First and foremost, if you haven't been downtown at night, I think y'all have to squirm the drive. It's beautiful out here. I love the lights and the trees when you walk out, and the Christmas music is played on the, on the speakers downtown. So I would say it's beautiful. I thank y'all to the Parks Department and the city for putting that out there. Another thing I want to say is thank you to all of our first responders, the police officers and the fire departments who are serving us on holidays. We take it for granted the time that they're taking away from their families. So I just want to publicly say thank you guys for what you do to keep us safe here in our community. Merry Christmas and go Yellow Jackets.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of everyone heading this way. Like I say, everything usually gets said before, before we get to mention it down here. But we have the Wrangler NFR coming up, and a lot of cowboys and cowgirls from our area are gonna be competing up there in Las Vegas, and I want to wish them good luck.
Mayor, I'm gonna take something that nobody said anything about.
What?
I wanna wish my wife a happy anniversary. Last Thursday, which just happened to be Thanksgiving, she has been putting up with me for forty-nine years.
Sure.
And I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say she's tougher than anybody gave her credit for being. But we've survived forty-nine. She said, I've gotta stay now. I'm in it for the cake. I said, I said, okay. I wanna wish her a happy belated anniversary.
Congratulations.
One other thing, Mayor.
Sir.
Just remembered something. On the fourteenth and the fifteenth, in the evening from five-thirty to eight, the Tanglewood Santas will be on duty. So for people who want to drive by the Tanglewood area of town, the Tanglewood Santas, which is a bunch of, of Santas, well, citizens that are dressed up and they'll be passing out popcorn and candy canes to all the kids that come by. So.
Is that the real Santa?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
Pretty much.
Several are.
Is that not?
Wayne Walton, too?
Yeah.
In compliance with the provision of the Texas Open Meetings Law set chapter D, Government Co. Vernons, Texas codes annotated when, in accordance with section five-five-one-oh-seven-four Personnel Matters and section five-five-one-oh-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property, and section five-five-one dot oh-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will stand in recess, and we'll come back in here if there's any for action that we may have taken in executive session. Thanks for everybody for being here.
Okay, at 7:35 our call is back into regular session. There was nothing we deliberated that needed to vote. So it is now 7:35 and we will stand adjourned.